Anything, Larry? You're letting off the... Sweetwater. Okay, call this meeting board. Please, the leaders first, please. Rick is there? Okay.
My legions, we defy the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we don't have anybody signed in today, so just go straight to the administrative section, and we can get a motion for those items, please.
Hold on. Second.
Curry, Mr. Brooks, and second. It's an all yes vote. Do the lead proceed?
Item A. Authorization for both rights, L O P, to file a verified complaint and motion for the preliminary injunction in the Circuit Court of Knott County naming the West Virginia State Tax Department, Mark D. Dittich, Acton Commissioner for the West Virginia State Tax Department, the West Virginia State Board of Education, Superintendent James V. Barris, Honorable Tim Miley, Speaker of the West Virginia House of Delegates, and Honorable Jeffrey Kassler, President of the West Virginia Senate. This complaint will challenge the constitutionality of West Virginia Code eighteen-nine-A, dash eleven-B, claiming that it violates the thorough and efficient clause contained in the article twelve of the Constitution of the State of West Virginia and violates the due process rights of Lincoln County students. Item B. Out of state travel for the following personnel: Sue McCombs and Randy Sanders to Columbus, Ohio, February twenty-five, twenty-six, two thousand fourteen, to attend the master scheduling workshop, paid for through type of expense. Wendy Brown, Wendy Johnson, Dionne Lucas, and Renata Hand, Connie Porter to the Carnaby Mellon University Sire, Center for Early Education Visitation Day in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, March thirteenth to fourteenth, two thousand fourteen, funded through state grants. Susan Holly Bunn Gardner, Jeanette Pramings, Catherine Davidson, Melissa Duncan, Joey Ferguson, Rebecca Ferguson, Chester Green, Laura Harshberger, Rodden Cooper, Lori Huthman, Patricia Keath, Deborah McCaw, Debra Roberts, John Addy, Justin Altice, Norbert Chatham, Lisa Chapman, Terry Chapman, Mary Ann Decker, Gerald Hartley, Danielle Mckay, Kayla Martin, Breton Brax, Rebecca, Roy Jones, Shortridge, Mark Stinkin, Joshua Watson, Doris Wilson, to Orlando, Florida, June first, twenty-one, who, twenty-six, two thousand fourteen, to attend the two thousand fourteen Law School Conference, and that's paid through the R of that. Any questions?
Any questions, then? If my call for question all in favor, then all yes, buddy?
Yes.
All yes on the administrative ones. Finance, the motion?
So, Lou.
Barry.
Second.
Schedule invoices totaling eighty-nine thousand, four hundred fifty-six dollars and sixty-two cents. Attached. Do you guys like me to do this just for a minute? Or does everybody pretty much understand how, what it means?
I mean, I don't know. If there's anything there, anything noteworthy, we'd be, well, here.
Well, let me just kind of... Of course, the first column is a check number. They write the fact, the value, the amount of the check. And then the fund, you know, we talk about the general fund is one-one, six-one is the special projects, and the seven-one is the R of money. And then, under a project, if it has zero, 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 that means it's the general fund. And if it has anything other than that, it's probably a special project or either a local project. And then the program function should kind of match in with the account title and then the object code. And then, there, what says current liability and all that? Those are mostly, anytime you see something like that, it's a payroll deduction that's withheld from employee checks. And it's just like, we pull it in, set it in the balance sheet, and then when we pay it, then it comes out with a current liability. I wish Rowdy would have made it today. Where does it say current? About, sorry, Chris. Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at item. I'm sorry. And anytime it has that current liability, that's almost always a payroll deduction. And other than that, it pretty much gives you a fairly decent detail. And I don't know who actually was it. Larry, who said, gee, what it is?
Yes.
And I love it. I think it's really, really good. It gives you guys free information.
There's one other thing I'd like to see on it, but I don't want you to lose your minds.
Well, tell me what it is, and I'll see if I can do it.
I don't, I don't think you can.
But tell me what it is.
Well, I like maintenance, but I'm sure Fred will like this, too.
Oh. What it is.
You want me to stop that?
Yeah, I can't do that.
Okay, all right.
But that new program that they're planning should be getting used to. No, the only, there's no way for me to get that out.
There's not enough room on them.
And I don't have... I would have a little bit of detail, but a lot of their stuff is, you know, pretty much a blanket purchase order. If they order, say, if they order ten commodes and five faucets, you know, I would see that information in my system. But if it's not detailed out like that, I wouldn't.
I know it's nearly impossible. That doesn't mean I would.
I would have done it for you if I could have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else, Birdie, that you want to do? Share finance?
Not at the start.
Okay, I need to ask a question related to finance. Back a month or so ago, we had a lady came in on the, got my attention without just current liabilities, that that program about...
Legalship?
Yeah. I can't remember the name of that.
Yeah, she's...
Is that still...
She has a few people signed up with just all the school closings. It's just been hard for her to get out there. But she, they are working.
They're in a process of doing that now.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's working. In fact, right before I came, I had a whole bunch of them on my desk that had signed up.
Is there a form that you use to do that?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we could...
Do y'all, are y'all interested in doing it?
Well, I think, yeah, some of them. I'm surprised they're...
Okay, okay. I have you guys ready to do it.
We can think about it.
Okay. I think it's about twenty-five dollars a paycheck. Two months.
I figured what the paycheck was.
She's coming here on February twenty-sixth to...
I wish.
Oh, central office.
Oh, you mean to explain it to them.
Get more information.
Okay, all right.
I'll send out an email and remind you that if y'all have any on that.
Okay, good. Okay, anybody have anything else on finance? Or, is that an all yes, buddy?
Yes.
Okay, all yes, somebody. Personnel, in motion, please.
Hold on, Lou. Second.
Curry, Mr. Brooks.
We have one item. Appointment of professional personnel for the FBI, C I B clearance and assurance of first-class permit from that future.
Any questions about that? Thank you. Just the one you mentioned, the state of the board yet. All those in favor of the personnel schedule? That all yes?
Yes.
Okay, we're down to the work session. Before we get into that, is there anything else that anybody wants to bring up prior to that?
Marcia. We're gonna get Marcia in here and train.
Okay, has Marcia used the forty days the board allowed her?
She had twenty. She's used those.
What is it, twenty? It started...
She used nineteen as a substitute. And we started out, we hired her as a substitute, worked nineteen days. And then we hired, she worked twenty as a trainer.
Okay, that's...
So she's worked right up to there.
That's why, because initially, I thought we said forty, and then maybe it was the way it was done. So she's used all those days?
Yeah, now we have a new person.
Right. Okay, but now, we're into... And it's like, I came here exactly how Mrs. Tander explained that to us, but she's not really coming in as a substitute.
No, no, we would, she would have to come back as a trainer.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to have a mission.
Well, that's what I mean. So to do that, you'd have to post like you did before. Is that what we're back at, explaining to us?
Yes.
Okay. So it's mostly just be that, if that's the board. How many days are you all thinking at this time?
Well, I'd like to have twenty.
I'd like to say ten. And I think two weeks is our, you know. Before, like with Marcia, you know, a lot of that was taken up with her work before, you know, we didn't have anybody. So she was kind of continuing her position many of her days in the training. But it looked to me like, you know, two weeks is ten days. You know, be able to train somebody in that period of time.
Well, as long as we...
I mean, that's my opinion. These guys can get, they may, but I think they should be.
So...
As far as me, how can we keep this happening over and over and over again in the future? Is there any...
I don't think you can. As long as you have new people coming in who have, like, zero experiences in these particular jobs. I mean, that'd be like, if Red leaves, you know, my goodness, there is no one that can come in and just pick up on her job unless she come back and train us.
Yeah, well, now, wait a minute. Can we not, when, when they accept another job, can we not hold them here until they train the new person? Is there anything law prevents us from transferring them in a certain timeframe?
Well, we have a, we have a number of days that we can't fill the vacant position.
Okay, we knew Birdie was leaving tomorrow. I mean, if she, could we not tell her you're gonna stay in that position till we hire a new person and train them? Is that against the law?
Unless she's resigning to go to another different agency, I think it's...
Well, I mean, I, I thought, you know, we decided we were gonna have two people there, and Marcia was, but the idea was gonna be that somebody was gonna be trained in all facets of the finance office, so that if something happened down the road, they, and somebody would be knowledgeable in payroll and...
Well, it's a little bit too complex to, you know, to just, like, Darlene and Robin are interchangeable.
Just easy place to... Well, I just, you know, I just wondered. Because I know at one time...
But now, the two positions are, that we did, is that, that we just hired? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, the two that took Marcia, you know, we had Marcia, so...
And Marcia went to, I mean, her replacement is strictly finance. And the other position is to include service and Medicaid. She, she's not in finance, but all that other...
Well, I just remember that it was divided up into two, we went from two positions, or from one to two, and they had different duties to help work. But somewhere along there, I thought that the idea was that somebody would be available, that way if somebody was sick for a month or something, you had somebody could fill out at least to what they were doing. Because you wouldn't be a substitute necessarily to come in and do it.
We had Rhonda Pramings that just left the job when I went to Lincoln County High School. Now, I know she came in this weekend to help do some things so that we were not getting that mind. You know, what's the likelihood of her continuing to help?
I don't, her mother's in hospitals, so we're going to want to get my child by now. And I don't think she really wants to come in on Saturday. Because I have Denise out there now. That's just kind of doing little kidless stuff because, you know, I can't take time to do much, whether in a training or payroll out. So she, this girl, needs to be trained. And of course, the biggest thing is that P E I entrance. It's just, it's a monster. So, the only thing I'll say, we're gonna set it at ten days. Then, we should establish that, and everybody only gets ten days. Because everybody else will get all these other days, and then we're up there killing ourselves because we only get ten days of help.
I don't understand the correlation.
Well, like, transportation had a trainer for almost a year.
What kind of trainer?
Led the school and helped the secretary up there almost a year. This is portrait this time. And then, of course, you know, but just, you know, different...
I think that what the board has to do, in my opinion, is tell us and speak for themselves, is look at each situation and decide what you think is necessary there. I don't want to think that we're gonna give a blanket number of days just because we did it here or did there. I don't know if what went on over there, if that made days, or if that was justified. Maybe it was. But I think we have to look at each one. Because I've thought about this. And once again, when we gave Marcia those extra days, many of that was just filling in to without somebody hired. But any job, you know, if I go out, you can't do it because you're in a different situation. But the average person that works somewhere, they turn in a two-week notice to give their employer the time to leave. And I guess the thought there is that that two weeks increments, that they have to get somebody that can be prepared to fill in. And our, totally knowledgeable as a person left, obviously. But...
But we don't even know who the person's gonna be until that person leaves and the job's posted. And then the person's hired, we don't even know.
Right.
Like, in the real world...
There's no way we can keep that person at position until we are in training. I mean, the law prohibits us from doing that.
We have to fill a job in twenty days.
Yes, the vacancy, like, at, yeah, the service, we have to post and fill within twenty days.
Okay, I got that.
And...
But why can't we keep her down there so those days are up? And make the person that's here to replace and stay in their position till... I mean, there's gotta be a way we can save taxpayer money here.
I'm trying to think through that, Fred.
Well, I mean, you don't have to give me an extra day. Just check on them and see. Well, I can't believe that we can't hold somebody in a position until we, till they've got the replacement.
Because, like you say, we have to hire somebody in that twenty...
Right, yeah.
Twenty days.
I guess it would almost be like, you know, if there's gonna be a vacancy somewhere, we're gonna have to put somebody...
Well, you could put a substitute, maybe, in the high school secretary position. You got that substitute secretary.
And not, you know, not all jobs need, you know, the training. But there are some that are more...
Well, I agree.
Takes more, you know, knowledge and that, that, of course, with secretarial skills, you can't necessarily just, you know, come in with some of these positions. And of course, some of those are in the funding part. You know, you've got to have a little bit of training up there.
He'll be on substitute secretary list to be able to go to high school and do that job. That's where this lady went, I think, was.
Yes.
Yeah, it depends on the, the job.
Yeah.
We send these people out there in these schools a lot of times with, here's your keys. Good luck to you.
Basically, all teachers, principals.
I wasn't quite sure where the school was.
You found it.
Like, we had four dollars and thirty-six cents in the general fund, and I had the keys. That's all I had. Good luck to you. Okay, but...
So we'll post, do we have to repost the job then? And wait until someone's hired, so...
Well, here's what you're, what it looks to me like, that first of all, we don't need to get until the twenty-fifth, so we can't even authorize any number of days till then. Then after that, Tricia, we have to post the job, and then after that, we'd have to employ the person, employ the same as Marcia to come in and help. But then Denise might be an expert. In a month's time.
She don't really have anybody that...
Is there a manual? Or the P E, does P E not give them some sort of, um, need?
How to... It's just one of those things you gotta have some line. Because I was gonna try to help with this all this morning, but there's so many different codes, and it's based on your salary, your age. Are you married to an employee that works for the board? I mean, it's just like a pitch on ball, trying to determine what you should withhold, you know? And are, is there, you have to pin it on like, how much? Is it, and then how much is your optional? Like, you know, is it a hundred thousand? Is it two hundred thousand? Is it ten thousand? I mean, P E I insurance is very complex.
Well, look, let me ask.
I mean, the rest of the stuff, we could probably mumble jumble our way through, but with the health insurance. And the bad thing is, so let's say we mess up and we should have pulled five hundred dollars out of someone's paycheck, and we missed that. Well, then the next time, we gotta pull a thousand dollars out of the paycheck. So, I mean, that's a thing that gets really upset for employees if that's not done.
Well, I mean, but how would you want us, how would you recommend that we do this to them?
Well, I just need somebody...
Well, I know that, I know. I think we are...
I think we do extra duty. We've done extra duty.
Because if I remember correctly with Mrs. Tander, it was that, that Marcia was not coming in as a substitute. She wasn't subbing for somebody. You know, she was doing something entirely different. And that was why it required to be posted, is that...
Right, and it was a trainer, yeah.
That's, so, I mean, we're in the same...
Well, she did two different things. Because, you know, for a long time, we didn't get the job posted, so...
Right, I'm not, I'm just saying how we...
She could do all kinds of different things.
How else can we do this other than the way it's been described? Where, unless, you know, maybe in the future, if you have a job that's gonna be, we're gonna be bidding on it, at that point, you need to come to the board and say, hey, I, we need to, we think when this person gets hired, can we go ahead and authorize to give them so many days to be trained? So that when the person's hired, you can go, they can be on board then, and have them hired. Because this, because, I, you know, we don't need to get to the twenty-fifth. We couldn't even authorize them to have any days until then.
We don't have anyone on the staff now. Apparently not, because it's...
No, yeah. I mean, Rhonda, because she got it. Rhonda Pramings, like, she was, you know, when I sat down with her and did the last P E I entrance, she had it. Okay, but now, she's left, so we're at ground zero again. With no one that knows how to do the P E I entrance.
Just a question. Let, let's say Marcia doesn't want that. No, I'm not coming. Then what would you do?
No, I'd be there, and then I'd kind of get her out.
And there's no one on P E I that you can call and ask questions?
Yeah, you can call and ask questions, but they're not gonna help you through all this stuff. And, you know, we got five hundred and thirty-three employees.
Yeah, but they don't change every week, but...
No, no, it's every month. They change on a monthly basis.
Why would they change on a monthly basis?
Well, they don't necessarily change, Fred. But every month, you gotta move bill. So there's people that's been added, there's people that's been taken off, there's marriages, of course, there's deaths. You know, there's all kinds of different things that happen. New employees, retired employees. So you just gotta try to get all that correct and matching what, what's going on.
I'm saying that you take, you take the monthly report and you see if there are any changes. If no one is, is, is asking for a change, it stays the same. It's, it's kind of like, I've got my list here of all employees. I've got my list of all of their benefits. And you go down and you match it if it hasn't changed. And the only thing, only changes that you make are the ones that have requested a change of marital status or of birth. Those are the changes. That, that's not a lot per month. An employee or someone retires. Those are the changes that are... Otherwise, it's, it's, it's just making sure that everybody's the same. The code is the same. And it's kind of like you're looking down a chart.
Is the person that filled this position before is the LA school employee here?
Yes.
The person that just, just took the job here a month or so, and transferred out. But she knows how to do the job?
She does how to do the job, yeah.
I mean, is there any way to have her train the new person that you're looking to hire? I think that's what Fred was kind of saying. If you, if you could have delayed her transfer where she could stay there and help train the new person for a while before she made the move, is what Fred was saying. Otherwise...
Well, if, if one of the high school can re-lease her an hour or so a day to train her for...
But then she has to be willing to do this.
Well, I understand that. But certainly, you'd expect an employee to cooperate a little bit in a situation like this.
Right, right.
The replacement is just like, Marcia Wiegert was the person who, where she retired and did the training. That, if there was, that has to be posted and then every, those that are going to have the job as a trainee can get some bid off. that are going to have the job as a trainee gets a bid off. You're not really, right, if you're substitute, you're not gonna have a job as a trainee. Anyway, if you all have some other.
Well, could it be extra duty?
Extra duty for who?
Marcia. Oh, extra duty is, is when you bring someone in to help another person do something for an amount of time and it is, is not a posted position, something that you don't post. It's like, if, if I did mail, and this only happens every so often, then we call someone in off the list to help with that person to do that project. We have someone extra duty that's been working and make that so that all of those things that, or some things, what are they?
Smart boards.
And all of those things that have to be for that, that's not something that is a, is a, ever wanna turn into a full-time job. You just need someone to help do that, and that's called extra duty, and that's in the, that's, that's relying on you that.
Does first one have to be on substitute?
Yes.
And Marcia is, she on substitute?
Yeah, actually, she is, she is. Because she did come in and work a couple days, had, once the job was posted, she came and worked a couple days.
Only, but do you have any classifications involved here, do you, do these people work in, but these, they were.
They were maintenance.
Maintenance, maintenance substitute, right?
And she, they, she was coordinator. She was coordinator of.
Is she a substitute for her employee?
No, she's a substitute secretary.
Okay, why don't you, you know, you look at that a little bit, maybe, see if there's a, is there an option there? Or maybe if y'all think something else you should have with Trish. I just don't know, anymore I thought about it, the dates, I just.
No, it's like.
Let's see, I need to do it very quickly.
Because we got an issue.
Right, that's.
And that's what I would say to Birdie, I said, we, I'm not gonna do anything until we talk.
Well, that's one thing, that's a reason I. Okay, any other things that we can share before we, before we back to the twenty-fifth? Something, if anything else, Mr. Booker, you can do something.
Do we want to discuss this one?
No.
Right.
No, I don't think we'd have to go to an exception session to discuss that.
Oh, okay.
Unless you all wanna do that, then you can turn the gun to the chicken. It's not like we'd like to do an exception session.
The exception session, by person or not?
Any open session. Anything else? Any water update for us today?
As far as the water, of course, we have no water at Dewar. I'm not sure when that's going to be back on. Midway, of course, is under boiled water advisory, but now the other issue, right now, the last correspondence that we had, you know, it's non-detectable in all of the schools, but we're continuing to use bottled water for this week for cooking and for any cleaning. We will have alternative menus. The food will be served on styrofoam or paper plates, styrofoam, utensils, all will be plastic at this time, with one fifteen this week.
We got a long, we had, last week, we talked about, we did a great deal of bottled water, then, of course, they brought water, like, Thursday or Friday night, we should have a lot of amount of water.
Right now, we're good.
Well, Trish, let me ask you, are we keeping the cost of this stuff to the school system?
Yes, yes, and we have submitted to FEMA.
You mean the labor for flushing and that?
Yes, loss of food, eating, extra things that we had to supply, I guess, we have submitted that. I don't think we paid up anything for water, that's all they provided. Correct, correct.
So, does it, we used a lot of extra water, took it flush, took it three different times?
Yes, plus buying the containers for the kitchens.
Yeah.
So this, the balance of this week, they'll continue to be limited, restricted to bottled water, whatever the cost of the citywide.
Yes.
And then we just won't, we, we face.
Yes.
Has there been any testing this week? You know, the last update that I saw was based on testing in the last week.
No, they have not required any extra testing for us.
Are there any plans to test again this week, or we just taking the position that was okay a week ago, we're gonna take another week and make sure it's all flushed out before we start using it?
We have, we have not received any instructions that we need to flush again, and we have not received any notice that we need to retest or that they're going to come retest.
Well, I think we need to request a date of, because when you, when you hear those hearing of Charleston, like, what's going on, they, all they talk about is canal account. Well, we're just good at canal account, and they need to come down here and test. And what about the test that Dana did? Did we get those to go?
We did, we have those, but they were taken, you have to remember, they were taken on the thirtieth.
Yeah.
Prior to.
We did, we.
Yes, before we get any of the, the flushing.
That's the result.
But it seemed like in Charleston, they, GW.
Yeah.
They went in and tested and then, in hours, they knew the results.
Yeah, yeah, that's one.
Maybe we could.
Well, right now, Steve, you know, if they get a complaint, they're going right in and testing and getting the results right back, so.
Well, it's the odor, correct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't know. I think I kind of agree with these guys, but it looks like for a while, maybe it would be advantageous to get a test done on, you know, weekly basis and give us a feel for, you know, because everybody talks about everything was fine at my school, then all of a sudden this odor came back, you know, it come back on us. And near the end of a long line for.
Right.
Anything that's been tried to, you know, a lot of it flowed this way, so now, I don't think the cost is to us of anything, but I think it's certainly something worth doing.
I think that was eight hundred and ninety-five dollars for that test right there.
Right, this, this is when we did the independent after.
If we ask the National Guard, just do the precaution on every, we don't have to take that, it's to me like we could do muscle samples every week or two.
I will ask.
Well, at some point, you'll get some confidence that it's all gone, but, you know, I don't think it's unreasonable at all to ask for at least one follow-up a week later to the non-detectability of last week, and I, you know, just don't see that as any reason. I'm sure someone could detect an odor if necessary.
I will do that. I will request.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll maintain our present plan and maybe evaluate on each week, and if we already give additional testing, we take that into consideration. Okay, okay, if nothing else, then we'll move on to the work session.